Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, Downtown Illyria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Would you like to get started if you could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the March 12th Lorraine County Board of Commissioners meeting. Our thought for the day, I cannot give you the formula for success, but I can give you the formula for failure, which is try to please everybody. And Ms. Blair, Ms. Blair has the dog today. A puppy. My puppy. She needs somebody with energy to take her walking.
This week's featured Pat is a female Australian cattle dog. She was a stray found on Murray Ridge in Illyria. She is in cage number three and is eligible for adoption on Saturday, March 14th. Look at there. Oh, good. Look here. Sit. Nice. There. Oh, good puppy. Shake. Oh, both hands. Saturday, March 14th, she's eligible for adoption, so she needs somebody to love her. Okay? Stop by our channel, see the dogs, check the website.
It's cute.
She says, "Anybody out there want me? I'm available." Thank you.
They have a lot of energy, so they like to run. Okay, Madam Clerk, whenever you're ready.
We have a proclamation today for proclaiming March as Mental Retardation and Development Disabilities, and Dr. Amber Fisher is here with the children.
Okay. Should I read it? Okay.
In the matter of proclaiming March 2009 as Mental Retardation and Development Disabilities Awareness Month throughout Lorraine County, whereas Murray Ridge Center recently celebrated its 41st year of providing services to Lorraine County children and adults with mental retardation and their families, and whereas 598 infants and toddlers with suspected developmental delays received early intervention services in 2008, and whereas 218 students with mental retardation and developmental disabilities received educational services in early childhood, primary, intermediate, and senior classes at Murray Ridge Schools, and whereas through Murray Ridge Center, more than 1,000 adults with mental retardation and developmental disabilities are given training and/or work experience in three work-activity centers, several community employment enclaves operated by Murray Ridge Production Center, or in other locations throughout the community, and whereas residential options are available to 58 individuals with mental retardation and developmental disabilities living in Murray Ridge-operated group homes, to 88 individuals with mental retardation and developmental disabilities living in group settings in the community, including homes operated and maintained by the Murray Ridge Housing Corporation, and to more than 150 individuals with mental retardation and developmental disabilities who receive Murray Ridge-administered services in residential facilities, foster care settings, their own apartments, or with their families. And whereas, participation is encouraged in local, regional, state, national, and international Special Olympic activities to provide recreation and competition experiences to more than 235 children and adults from Lorraine County eligible to participate, and whereas assistance that will permit families to care for family members with mental retardation or developmental disability in their home is made available to more than 630 individuals through the Family Support Program. And whereas Murray Ridge Center staff network and social service, health, and welfare agencies to enrich the environment of children with developmental disabilities and to find appropriate residential services for individuals with mental retardation placed on a waiting list, and whereas the Lorraine County Board of Mental Retardation and Developmental Disabilities oversees funds from federal, state, local sources to provide comprehensive services to Lorraine County individuals with mental retardation and developmental disabilities and their families.
Signed by your three commissioners, Lori Kokoski, Ted Kelo, and Betty Blair.
Thank you. This March, as we face the most compromised economic environment since the inception of county boards of mental retardation and developmental disabilities, it's more important than ever that we promote awareness of the needs and contributions of our most vulnerable citizens. For more than 41 years, Murray Ridge Center has had the privilege of providing necessary support to Lorraine County's individuals with developmental disabilities, excuse me. Through a variety of programs, ranging from early intervention services to address identified delays of babies and toddlers, to functional academics for Lorraine County students with the most serious intellectual, physical, and behavioral challenges, Murray Ridge Center has been able to effectively meet the needs of eligible children with developmental disabilities because of continued community support. Through a variety of services, including all-day work-activity centers, coordination of community-based vocational opportunities, and provision of residential services to individuals whose families are no longer capable of providing the necessary supervision and care, Murray Ridge Center has been able to meet the most important needs of adults with developmental disabilities because of continued community support. In these very difficult times, we're most appreciative of the continued recognition of our work on behalf of our friends, neighbors, children, and coworkers with developmental disabilities, and we at Murray Ridge remain fiercely committed to being good stewards of public funds. On behalf of myself, our Board of Directors, and most importantly, more than 2,000 Lorraine County individuals with intellectual disabilities, we applaud the county commissioners for once again declaring March to be Mental Retardation and Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month in Lorraine County. And to help me express this sentiment, I've brought a couple of friends with me today. Obie, would you like to come on down?
Somebody's got a big smile.
We have a microphone.
Say something? This is Obed Rebelllo, and he's a student at the primary wing of Murray Ridge School. Go ahead, say something. Is it yourself?
Yes.
Here. Go ahead, give it a push.
Thank you.
Yeah, he said thank you.
You're welcome.
And my next friend is Sarah. You want to come on down, Sarah?
I'm going to speak into here. This one. I use the big one. This one. Oh, my goodness. Hold up to your mouth.
My name is Sarah Ward. I went to Murray Ridge School and started in the adult program in June 2006. These are the fun things I do. The Special Olympics, now this is my favorite. I like basketball, track, softball, and swimming. I have been in Special Olympics for a long time. I love it. I like Saturday work at the Murray Ridge School. I like the open gym. I like after-hours activities with the work department. We go to games like basketball, baseball, hockey. We go to movies, out to eat, bowling, and do a lot of really fun things. I like this because I get to hang out with friends and stay out late at night.
Uh-huh.
I also like to go to the dances at Murray Ridge on Friday nights. I get to hang out and see friends that work at the other workshops during the day. I work at the Lorraine workshop. I like to come to work to make a lot of money. Sometimes I work so hard, I'm tired when I get home. Sometime my paycheck is over $100. Murray Ridge staff are nice, and they teach me all kinds of different stuff. They train me on different jobs and help me with my problems. When there isn't any work, I like to play games, do water searches, and visit my friends. I like coming to Murray Ridge so much, I even make my dad bring me on his honor days. Murray Ridge also helped me choose where I want to live. Right now, I live with my family, but someday I would like to move to a group home. I am so happy that Murray Ridge has all these activities for me so that I keep busy.
You did a very nice job.
They're going to take pictures with the kids.
They're going to come around. Should we do a picture?
Sure.
Okay.
Let's do a picture, Obie. He wants to be a movie star when he grows up, I think.
Don Bates from Lorraine County Veterans Office?
I had asked Mr. Bates to come in. We had, there's been some changes made at the veterans' organization, and a lot of the veterans have been calling me with questions and concerns, and I thought we better get the information out there as to those changes so people understand what we have to offer here in the county for our veterans. So, Mr. Bates?
Jim, would you like to turn it over? Please get a presentation.
First of all, I want to thank you for inviting me back down here to talk before the commission, and also the residents of Lorraine County. Again, my name is Donald Bates, Director for Lorraine County Veteran Services. I also have with me today is our President of the Veterans Commission, Bob Childers.
Hi.
And Bob Mackin here today, and Dana Parisi is my administrative assistant. As before, my office has three taskings that we do. One, and most important, is the financial assistance that we give to our veterans here in the county. The next one is transportation to and from VA medical appointments. And the third one that is real dear to my heart, because it brings money back into the county for our veterans, is VA claims work. My office is mandated by the Revised Code 5901. It's all public knowledge. When I took over in January of '08, I did not make any changes to our office until May of '08. Currently, my staffing is one full-time service officer that deals with VA claims work. I have two financial assistants investigators, and then a van driver, and Dana is our administrator, who she basically runs the office. She takes great care of me and also our budget. The biggest change that I made was to go to a by appointment only office. With the staffing that we have, we could not handle all the walk-ins that we were getting, and it was not fair to our veterans to have them wait in the hallways or wait outside to possibly be seen. So, to make it a professional office, we went to a by appointment only. Now, again, that change did bring apart a lot of complaints, because people were used to just walking in our office, no problems. If you're running a professional office, you need to make some changes from now, from time to time. Our office hours are open, 8 to 4, Monday through Friday. We have our sign-in sheet that we have our veterans come in and sign in, and they wait out in the reception area, and we come up and get them. Same thing with our transportation network. You've got to call, make an appointment to be on the van. It's first come, first served for our van rides. And one of the things we implemented was if you no-show, and you no-show twice, you're on probation for six months. You're taking a seat away from a veteran that could have went to an appointment. And with the way things are in the county, the way things are nationally, with the cost of gas and fuel, I mean, this is taking away money from our office by transporting veterans. I'm going to throw some numbers at you at this present time. These are 2,007 numbers from the VA. State of Ohio, we have 957,889 veterans in the state. Here in Lorraine County, we have 26,838. These are estimated numbers here in my office. We had made 6,500 contacts in our office for financial assistance. 411 of them were actually assisted with financial aid, dealing with rent, food, utilities. 58 were denied benefits. They could not have been eligible for the benefits through the county, and six of them were over budget. For last year, we had a total office visit of 3,382. Those were, that's actually people that came to our office. For our van, we transported 1,600 veterans to medical appointments. Now, this year, there's going to be some changes on the van transportation. DAV Chapter 20 up in Lorraine sold their chapter home, and they had to spend down some money. They donated the money to purchase another vehicle for the county, and they're donating it to my office. That's going to create a driver's position for our office. We're going to have to hire another driver for this vehicle. This vehicle is going to be earmarked to transport veterans solely within this county to Lorraine Outpatient Clinic. What we're going to do is we're going to do the same type of scheduling for transportation here locally, whereas there will be a morning run, so we'll be able to go out in the early morning, pick up the veterans, take them up to Lorraine Outpatient Clinic, wait there until their appointments are over in the morning, take them back, and then an afternoon run. Same thing, go out to the veterans' home, take them up to Lorraine Outpatient Clinic, and then take them home later in the afternoon. The van is going to be similar to what we have right now, and as we're working it, we're trying to get it actually wheelchair accessible, so that we can at least have one wheelchair put onto this van. This has come being donated by Ford Motor Company and Disabled American Veterans. There's a DAV transportation network. It's all, basically, it's all volunteer through VA. But with the way they're going to do it here in the county, the vehicle's being donated to our office. All maintenance, fuel, is going to be taken care of by VA. We have to provide the driver. So, we will be hiring a driver in the near future. That van is expected to be here in the county approximately May, and then we have to turn it over to the VA to get everything taken care of, and then it'll come back. VA claims. We processed 458 claims last year for benefits. That would either be for something that was service-connected or non-service connected. Okay? These are a lot of numbers. Under the changes that we made in our financial aid guidelines, we made a revision in November 18th, 2008. I took over in January of '08. I got in contact with 87 counties besides ours, and we conferred with what other counties were doing and how we were working it. And with the budget constraints, we have to work together to watch how we spend our money. According to, going back to 5901, my office has actually allocated .5 mil of the property tax. And if I were to request .5 mil of that property tax, the county would probably go bankrupt. That averages out to about $3 million a year. So, I mean, that's, we've got to watch where we spend our money. And if, county can't survive if we don't have money. And if we watch how we spend our money, work together, we'll be able to last. The main issue about our financial assistance, financial assistance is a temporary assistance. It's not a lifestyle. It's not Social Security. It's not welfare. This is the property taxes going back to the veterans here in our county, and it was set up and intended to help veterans on a temporary basis. And if it becomes not temporary, it's declared to be a permanent in nature, and then the veteran is not eligible for this type of benefit. One of the main key changes that we made was duration of time. We offer a six-month period, month per month, up to six months of assistance. That gives that veteran a little extra help to possibly find another job or get into other types of programs that can help them financially or get back on their feet. The main change we made was the timeframe between assistance from our office went from six months to 12 months. Now, one of the main reasons about this was after reviewing a lot of our files, I seen a lot of repeats. People coming in, working assistance with us for six months, going away for six months, coming back for six months. One case in person, there was a veteran that was here in the county, and we actually gave them $35,000. And it was over a series of years, from approximately 2001 to 2006. But every six months, they were coming back. That seemed like it was a permanent nature, so we had to stop that one. This way, we can help the ones that are actually in need and not help the ones that don't want to help themselves, basically. That's what it comes down to. It is temporary assistance to help them get off, just get off their feet and try to get a job. Another change that we made was, just like unemployment, unemployment, I do believe it has 36 weeks of benefits for a lifetime. I think that's what the law states. What we did was we created where if you served 48 months in the military, you're eligible for 48 months of benefits through the county. Not continuous, but through your lifetime. If you served, say you served two years, you're eligible for 24 months of benefits through our office. But again, that's not a continuous 24 months. It'd be six months, then you have to wait 12 months, and if there's a problem, you can reapply. Now, we've had a lot of veterans that were in the program that were working and got laid off. There are circumstances that that one-year timeframe can be overlooked. And with the exceptions, we have a statement that says, "Veteran Service Commission may consider exceptions on a case-by-case basis." So, if there's a dire need that they need to have assistance, we will give them assistance. They're not turned away because of that 12-month rule. That was one of the biggest changes. Another change was the probation periods. If they were found to falsify documents, the probation period used to be one year. We went to two years. Same thing with failure to report any income changes, we went to two years. We have to watch how our office spends money, because it is the taxpayers' money that we're using. And unfortunately, you cannot please everybody. Okay? Also, my office is a county office. I have nothing to do with the federal office. Another change that I made when I came in there was, a lot of people were coming to my office for these verification letters of their VA income. I'm not a part of the VA. I work for the county. I work for the veterans in the county. I can make a phone call to the VA, and everyone knows that number. It's VA's number is 1-800-827-1000. You can call that number and ask for verification of your income through the VA, and they'll send you that letter out. There was, in the past, practice where our office was doing that. Well, that would be like you signing my taxes. It's not right. I can, I'm not a verifying organization, and I'm not a certifying organization, and I'm not a federal organization. So, I really cannot verify and put my name and say, "Yes, this is what you're getting from the VA," and it'd be leaked. So, that was one and another issues that we started having problems with. Recently, phone calls. This month is very special. Elsie Williams is my service officer. He's also Army National Guard. He's deployed. So, Elsie's a service officer, I'm a part-time service officer. That takes us down to one service officer in the office, myself. We are rendering, trying to make changes in the office. Yolanda Bond, who is currently our financial aid assistance, she has been put into a training program here in the state of Ohio, which is an 18-month training program to become a service officer. So, once she's done with her tasking, we'll have two full-time service officers in the office, plus myself. So, there are changes to be made, and hopefully it'll be alleviating some problems. But like I stated, we cannot please everyone all the time. We earmark timeframes for our veterans for appointments. It's their personal time. We want to give that personal time to them. The phone calls, we try to get them back as fast as possible. There is a timeframe where I just recently had a vet call our office three times. First time, he didn't want to leave his number. Second time, he did. The third time, he did. That was last week, and I, he called on Thursday and Friday, and I got back to him on Tuesday. And unfortunately, what he wanted to do, he took care of himself. This veteran, I knew from before, when I worked at the Disabled American Veterans Downtown Cleveland. I actually worked his case and helped him out before, and he just wanted to, you know, be seen, right like that. We just can't do that on an emergency basis. If there is something dire need, they can contact the VA. If we're not available, there's other avenues. If they're with an organization, like the Disabled American Veterans, VFW, AMVETS, American Legion, Vietnam Veterans of America, Military Order Purple Heart, Marine Corps League, or Paralyzed Veterans of America, those are the eight organizations that work downtown at the federal building. Those individuals should know who their actual power of attorney are, and they can actually contact them in emergency situations they're going on with cases. Again, a lot of people think that my office is actually the VA. And we've had contacts, well, you have a computer right there. You can pull my stuff up. No, I can't. I'm the county office with limited access to anything, especially VA programs, and it's very hard. So, we make phone calls when the veteran's in our office. This is outreach. When I took over, outreach is another issue that I really enjoy doing. This is getting out to the veterans, getting out to the organizations. This year so far, I've done four outreach programs. We did one at the American Legion Post 12 here in Illyria, did it out at Abbey Wood, went to Columbia Station, VFW, and then also did another one up at Lake Point Nursing Facility. We go out to where- We go out to where the veterans are located. Now, just briefly, I don't want to take too much of time about those slides. Again, this is our new seal for our office. Again, Lorraine County, my office is set up and guarded by the Ohio Revise Code fifty-nine oh one, which everyone can get a hold of. And we went through, and this is, again, what my office takes care of. Free transportation to and from Wade Park. This year, I did put in a request to have a new vehicle purchased, and I withdrew it, mainly be solely because of budget constraints. Uh, we're, we, the vehicle that we have right now, we're taking out another year. So, currently, we have approximately eighty thousand miles on that vehicle already, and it's only two years old. I will be asking for the purchase of that new vehicle next year, when next year's budget comes through, so that we can possibly transport more veterans. The vehicle that I'm going to be requesting is a larger vehicle. It's going to be a similar to one of the Lorraine County Transit buses that has wheelchair accessibility, that will be able to have four wheelchairs on the vehicle, and also transport eighteen passengers along with those four wheelchairs. The drivers will also need to be CDL licensed, so our, our current drivers will be getting training for that. And this way, we can transport more veterans. Because we are turning away veterans for our transportation, and that's sad. I would love to try to get as many veterans to their medical appointments as necessary. With the new veteran, VA, um, vehicle coming into the county, that's going to help out directly here in this county. Because there's a lot of veterans that cannot drive, and they have to rely on family members or neighbors. So, this new vehicle will help transport those veterans to our local outpatient clinic. The rest of this, this is dealing with VA issues, how to file a claim, and what forms need to be filled out. This is wartime service. Case development, and this, this is most important right here. This, this slide I always leave up for a long time when I'm doing my outreach. This slide is how a veteran can become service-connected. There's seven ways a veteran can become service-connected and obtain money from the VA, which comes back into the county for spending for the county. Direct basis is basically something that happened on active duty. Directly aggravation, that's normally if you had a pre-existing condition and it was aggravated by service. The presumptive, um, that's, right now, presumptive conditions are really predominant with our Vietnam veterans. Agent Orange being exposed by that way. Diabetes, cancers, that's all related to Agent Orange. The secondary conditions, say you're service-connected for a left leg, and now your right leg's bothering you. As long as you have medical documentation, we can actually file a claim for your other leg that was not injured in service, but could be related to your service-connected leg. Undiagnosed illnesses, mainly those are for the Gulf War vets. And then the rest of these, malpractice and vocational, vocational real, excuse me, rehabilitation programs. If you're in a voc rehab program, you're being trained to do something. If you get hurt during that timeframe, they can become service-connected. It's not, you know, doesn't have nothing to do with military. If you, um, are in a car accident on your way to school, and you break your leg, that can become service-connected. Malpractice is just like out in the civilian sector. If you're treated by the VA and something goes wrong, you can file claims against them. The parrot organs, right lung, left lung, it's all internal stuff. So, I mean, that's, these are ways that people can get money from the VA for their conditions. And like I said, I don't want to harp on this too much, but this is what I go through for veterans. And like I said, this is on a Saturday. I have one coming up at AMVETS at Post Thirty-two. And I do believe the date is, uh, April twentieth, if that's a Saturday, I can't remember the actual date. But we will be down at AMVETS Post Thirty-two, Middle Avenue, doing this presentation. And the presentation only lasts about forty-five minutes, and then I'm there to talk to each individual vet. So, don't want to open up to questions?
Well, one thing that concerns me is you said that one of the veterans called you on Thursday, and you weren't able to return the call until Tuesday, so if he can't walk into the office and, or, and he has to make an appointment, I mean, that's kind of a long time before, you know, between Thursday and Tuesday if it's an urgent need.
Okay. The answer for that is have appointments, I have people in my office. My phone does not ring when I have a client sitting in front of me. The most important person in front of me is sitting there, and that's that client. When you're receiving approximately thirty-two phone calls a day, and you're also taking appointments, I cannot return every phone call every day. So, it does take time. In a timely manner, he made the phone call on Thursday and Friday. Tuesday was the first available time that I was able to get to him. I keep an actual log of every call that comes into my office. I take it off my answer machine, write it down, the date, the time that he called, who it was, and what it was about. And I go back through and start from where I left off, and I start calling. And that's, basically, it took that long to get back to that person while also doing appointments in the office. So, I mean, it's, it is tough. We're, we're undermanned, and we're, we're trying to watch how we spend money. Again, our office, we have approximately twenty-six thousand veterans here in this county. We're actually considered one of the smallest manned offices per capita, per veterans. There are other offices that have less veterans who have more, um, employees. But here in the county, we're being wise with expenditures, and we are helping veterans as soon as we can.
And while your one employee has been deployed, you could not bring somebody in to fill that gap?
You cannot.
You're not allowed?
No, you, um, the service officers have to be certified by the state. They have to complete an eighteen-month training program before they can actually be working with the veteran on their own. And like I said, we, we did bring in, we have an employee that's on staff right now, Yolanda Bond. She's actually an investigator, helping with financial aid. She is currently in the training program, and she sits in on appointments with me, and also with Elsie Williams. So, she's in a training status, so she's watching how things go on. She actually held an appointment on her own while I was watching her. So, I took, actually took the appointment, but she interviewed. So, she cannot, at this present time, legally do any of the work. But as time goes on, we will have a second, uh, service officer.
Don, question for you, is there any retired service-trained people in Lorraine who could do that on a part-time fill-in basis when someone's deployed? Do we have anybody retired from that position?
Oh, or Bannick.
Hey, go bring Alan.
He's in Florida.
Oh, okay. So, there's nobody locally then who could fill in as a stopgap?
Not at this present time.
Not like a visiting judge or something, is what I'm thinking, was if somebody was retired from that position would come in and fill in when someone's deployed, it would be helpful?
Not at this present time that I'm aware of.
My other concern is, you know, the more men and women that start coming back home, the need's gonna be greater and greater, and it seems like they're even right now, less and less serviced, so I don't know what the answer is other than probably having to hire an additional staff person.
The veterans that are coming back from Iraq and Afghanistan, they're actually being sought to by the VA. Whenever there's a unit that comes, I'm just going to take, for instance, uh, the Mansfield National Guard unit. If they're deployed and they returned, the VA regional office here in Cleveland actually sends a team down to their unit once they return. And they go through a triage program and explain their benefits. And they actually get first-line service right through them, before they even get to their county. Once they're done there, the county, excuse me, the VA will let us know who actually is coming back to our county. And they're supposed to let us know that they're here. We've had a couple that have come into our office that we've helped. And basically, all they did was, they had follow-up paperwork that needed to be done. The claim was already existing, and we had just to follow-up paperwork, and then watch it through the system.
Is, one of the things, um, one of the, one of the concerns was, you, you guys provide forms for the veterans that they would normally come and pick up, but now they have to have an appointment to pick those forms up? Is that, am I, you're saying that correctly?
If they're, um, if they're coming for financial assistance, what we do is we mail that out to them. It's a, it's a package that lets them know what they actually need. And then what happens, they schedule an appointment for them to come back with that, if they're a first-time applicant to our county. Now, for, um, other forms, if there is, um, Dana, Dana has done a lot of things, uh, she takes, she actually takes walk-ins once in a while. If someone comes in and they're looking for a two fourteen, and it's not on file in our office, Dana will go online and actually request this form through St. Louis. She'll sit there with the veteran, input the information, ship it off. We had a phone call come in the other day, uh, the gentleman's from out of state, looking for his father's information. We did not have it in our office, Dana contacted the state of Ohio, they faxed it up to us, we know that out to the bad. So, there is, you know, there is, on a daily basis, it's, it's hit and miss. It depends upon what we have going on at the time. If I'm with a client and someone walks in and they're wanting to see me, they're, can't do that. I will make a scheduled appointment for them if they can wait, and then they can come back. Like I said, I want to set up their time for them, instead of trying to be quick and just shuffle the paperwork.
Did you have any other questions? I know you were one of the reasons why we had.
Yeah.
You can come over here.
Ed Hatcher, Ameris Township.
Hold on one second. Okay.
Um, I've had contact with the Veteran Service Office since nineteen seventy-one. All the predecessors, directors there, always found ways to schedule appointments. When you've got to file a claim, you know you've got to schedule an appointment. Just to step in there and ask the questions, a lot of the time Dana could answer. You shouldn't have to have an appointment, or get, get a piece of literature, you shouldn't have an appointment. So, there's concern about making everything professional, or even make it semi-professional, and just, you know, let the person know, if you're going to come in here, you've got a one-minute question, I've got time, I'll answer it. When I get done with this guy over here. You don't have to make a, a miniature bureaucracy. And as far as referring people at one eight hundred eight two seven one thousand number, that's like, uh, if someone's got bad surgery, they cut off the wrong leg, refer them to a community hospital instead of, because the VA is the biggest bureaucracy in the world. I'll pass.
Okay. You have to come up to the microphone, and please state your name and your address.
Uh, my name is Jose Maniola from Lorraine, Ohio, two seven seven Oakley Boulevard. Um, I talk with some veterans in Lorraine, in Lorraine City, and, uh, I heard some stories, and some true ones, from the past, uh, VSO officers that worked there to the present. And there's a lot of things that are going, that are going wrong over there, and they're not getting resolved, and there's claims are getting lost through the system, and basically, the man, the office is undermanned, and there, and there's just not a lot of workers there to handle twenty-eight thousand vets in Lorraine County. You know, it's just, I mean, the man is right, you know, it's just undermanned. They got a man deployed in Iraq, and, um, and I think they just need to get some volunteers, train some volunteers, I'll be a volunteer for a couple of days. They don't want to get volunteers. They say they got to be licensed, and they got to be so on and so forth. And, uh, I'm a vet, I'm a con, uh, you know, a five-year vet, Navy vet, and I got a year of college, graduated high school, you know, I got some brains in my head here. I can, you know, go for a little training and answer phones. I mean, I did telemarketing, I mean, I go on the phones, I can make, jot notes and give them to Don or whoever needs to go. And that's one of the problems there. You call over there and they say, oh, yeah, I'm the operator, um, hold on, I'll connect you, Don Bates. And the next thing you know, you're getting a line, uh, a voicemail, and it's like, yeah, well, leave a message after the beep, for, for time. So, you know, I called fifth March, they called me ten March. So, he did call back, and it was too late, I already got my, I went to Cleveland to get my claim settled. But anyway, I got notes here. You know, I asked him why there was no walk-ins, you know, he said it was his rule, I made the rules there, I don't want no more walk-ins. I said, well, that's pretty, you know, unprofessional, I mean, no walk-ins, I mean, that's like slapping the face to these vets. Like, I came in one day, uh, because another veteran from the unemployment side of the, uh, office said, yeah, they have walk-ins from two to four. Well, he was misinformed, you know, about the way they operate over there, and, and he said, uh, go on over there from two to four. So, I went over there about a little after two, and I went over there, and there was a lady over there from the worker, and she goes, no, uh, there's no walk-ins, I'm sorry. It's like, and I signed my name on the log, you know, it was on the book, and, you know, I told her, well, what's going on here? And she goes, well, there's no walk-ins, you got to go home. So, I went home, you know, and I said, whatever, so then, uh, then he called me a couple of days later, but anyway, you know, it's that, all these veteran organizations that are on that unemployment office, they need to be on the same page. There's obviously, the unemployment side does not know what's going on with the Veteran Service Office on the other side. There's five reps in front of the unemployment office that do not know what's going on with the Veteran Service Office on the other side. They need to be on the same page, and it doesn't take much to learn who's who working there. There's not that many people working there, like five, you know, you can count them on your finger. They need to know what's going on. The Veteran Serv, uh, Service Office on the unemployment side need to know what's going on on the other side, and work as a team. There's no team aspect there, you know, and what I learned in the military was basic functions, you work as a team. Basic fundamentals, and there's no basic fundamentals there, there's no teamwork here. And everything's sliding through the cracks. And, uh, got one thing here. I got a couple of things here. You know, I asked Don, you know, why your phone calls, what's going on with the phone calls? He said phone calls are his lowest priority. That's what he told me in my ear on the phone. He goes, phone calls are the lowest priority. I said, what, so that means that veterans are the lowest priority? You know, that's like telling me, oh, the veterans are the lowest priority. We're the ones that pay the taxes, we're his boss, and he's telling us we're the lowest priority? I think that's the wrong attitude. He has a bad outlook about veterans, and they seem like they're in inconvenience, you know? He treats us like second and third-class citizens out there, you know? And it's like, come on, you know, this is a new age, you know, we have a brand-new president here in the White House. You know, we have a new heart that's going to be in our America here, you know, we got to, we're beating to a different drum. And we got a new flag, it's a different shade of red, white, and blue. Come on, you know, get with the program, or get left behind. We need people, volunteers, we need more workers here, we need more money. We, and the president said veterans are number one, and he's going to put more money out there for us, and it needs to happen.
Well, I hope that happens, and I hope they give more money to our, our county Veterans Office, because I think the bottom line is, I don't think it's really, you said about him saying phone calls are his last priority. I don't think he's meaning that you are.
Well, ma'am, that's what he seems to be thinking.
I know, but I think what he's, he mentioned earlier, the person in front of him. I know, but I think he, what he's, he mentioned earlier, the person in front of him takes first priority, so phone calls would be secondary, I don't think he meant it the way you took it. Um, I think we have to practice some patience here until something does happen, uh, and we do get an additional body in there to help with, with the volume that you seem to have.
Okay. And, and hold on, hold on, I have a floor, let me talk. I got a couple more things, and then I'm gonna be over with. The past commanders, you know, in the past, you know, um, uh, were prejudiced, would not serve African-American vets. And that's, and that, I heard about that from a veteran. And, um, prejudice in, in America, in Ohio, Lorraine, and that, that's bad. You know, and, uh, and they get paid too much, I think those Veterans Service Officers get too, paid too much, and they do too little for the vets. And, uh, and I've heard from other vets, and when they come in for a, a claim on a certain month and date, uh, they, they write it out, and they put, uh, uh, put a different date on there, and they, and they don't want you to get retro or back pay. That's coming out from the government, not from your pocket. And that's what I'm, that's what I'm hearing out there on the streets, from these veterans, from the veterans clinic, all the way to the hospitals, you know, and all on the streets. And, um, and that, that's just what's going on over there, you know, and, 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 and we need to get a fair shake, you know? You know, it's our time, you know? And the veterans need to get together, and they just need to, you know, uh, just get something resolved. We need volunteers at that office, you know? I don't care about money, you know? I'll go over there, I'll volunteer, I'll answer a phone, you know? I got training in it. Just get some people over there, 'cause obviously, you know, you know, they got a man in Iraq, you know, they, they just, they just need to get that man office, you know, that office manned, you know, thank you.
Thank you. No chance, yeah, no chance in volunteer, just to answer phones or anything like that?
If someone wants to come in and volunteer their time, that's fine, but we're limited on phone call, uh, phone stations also. Each employee has their own phone, and their, the phones are designated for those individuals. If we move the phone, go to a different location, they can sit at a chair, and maybe a small table, and fine, they can answer that, that phone. As for, um, the claims, any claim that comes out of my office does not get lost. It gets sent directly to the VA. Now, what he's run, uh, talking about is, there's been a lot of claims lost at the VA regional offices. And then in New York City, the whole entire staff, from the director on down, was fired because of lost claims. The two, there's only two VA, uh, veterans reps over in Employment Agency, it's Ron Ramsey and Natalie. When I made the changes in May eighth, they were notified. Again, I sent out another notification, 'cause we had some conditions that happened on February ninth, I resent that notice out to our location. So those people are notified of what's going on. I cannot, uh, speak on behalf of Ron Ramsey, or Natalie, of, if they're not reading their documents, they're supposed to be knowing what goes on in our office. As for a statement that I made to him, I did tell him that phone calls are the lowest priority to me. The veteran in front of me is my pri, highest priority. That's what I stated, and he did not finish his statement. And as for our office being paid, I took a six thousand, six thousand dollar pay cut to come here to the county, to do this job. I have a passion for veterans. Anyone that you talk to at the VFWs and vets, they know me. They know what I do, and how much time I spend after-hours at those locations. I was at a meeting last night in, in Ovum, and the night before, I was at the VFW ten seventy-nine. Next week, I got two more meetings at night. Got a, a meeting coming up on a weekend, so I am passionate about my veterans that are here in this county. That was one of the sole reasons why I came to the county, was instead of working for the entire state of Ohio, and the veteran being just a number, or the national level, I was asked to come here to the county level, so I did, because I wanted to help the veterans here locally. I'm not gonna argue.
I don't, I don't think you need to argue, I, I actually just wanted you to come here to let all the veterans know what the changes are, that there are no walk-ins, everything is by appointment.
Yes.
Maybe if there's a, a way somehow to get another person or two to help you out over there, because I know you have a, a, a big job ahead of you, and maybe more to come, so. And we need to take care of our, our veterans.
Excuse me, Don, though, does all of your funding come from the inside milage, then? The property tax, a hundred percent, or do you have federal, is it a mix of dollars?
No, it comes directly from the county.
Hundred percent, correct, that's what I believe.
Point five mil from the county.
Right, so there is no federal dollars coming to help local? Okay, I just want to make that clear, the question came up that we're gonna get more, it's funded here locally.
Correct. And like, like I stated, if I ask for five point five mil, your county's gonna go broke.
We appreciate your financial.
And we're trying, we're trying to be frugal, and still help the veterans, is the main key.
I, I'm the, uh, one of the commissioners, I represent AMVETS. One thing is, I think there's a misunderstanding of, of all veterans are, that I put in a claim in, uh, in December of, of oh-eight, uh, uh, or oh, oh-seven, what was that? It was, it was around about almost four hundred days before I got any word back from anybody on that. And, uh, it, it went through that office in Lorraine County, but the VAs in, in Cleveland, sent it down to, uh, West Virginia, then it ended up in, in Atlanta, Georgia, and then it came back here. The, the, the misunderstanding, I think, with a lot of veterans are, that they, uh, i- i- it takes a long time. Not from our standpoint of this county office, it's from the VAs up in Cleveland, but you don't want to pass the buck. But one thing is, that, that I've never got, uh, I, I've only got maybe one complaint of being on that board for one year, of any one of these veterans here. No, no, no one's ever contacted me that there's a problem in the county. And, and I seek out to the AMVETS, I go out there, but there's groups around, there, there's representatives from the DAVs, there's representatives from the VFW, there's representatives from AMVETS, there's representatives from the Order of Purple Heart. But, uh, if you people have a problem, we, we, there's numbers out there, you could ask for one of us to help you out.
That, it should be advertised in newspapers, at a Times or a Journal, one or two ads a month. Veterans Service Life is what they can do for you. Calhore County puts it on TV ads all the time. They got more money than we do, I know, you, you said that before. There's something I advertise it, and get the word out, except one of the Florida AMVETS.
But I, 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 I don't want to argue the point, but a lot more counties, in Calhore County, they get almost, uh, tw- uh, twelve million dollars a year of, of, uh, tax money that goes into that, uh, one there. There's a lot of regional offices out there. One thing is, hopefully, that this county can get some, uh, that we can support ourselves and get up higher, that where, where we need to put an office, or we need our office eventually, should be down where that VA hospital is, down there in, in, in Lorraine. And I think that would solve a lot of problems in here. But right now, uh, the county of us, we, we have to be, uh, watch our spending, as well as everybody else's, my spending, as well as the county's spending, so. If you'd mind, we'd like to do that, I, I, I won't take any more of your time, thank you.
Commissioner?
Yes.
Just a few points of clarification, if I may. Uh, Don, I think I have some space, and I certainly can work on a different phone number for a hotline, and maybe we can work with the, the Veterans Group, or RSVP seniors, to staff a hotline, at least to log in calls, and give a live voice, and how frustrating it can be when people leave voicemail. So, I may be able to help you with that over there. I promise you a little heat in the room this time, it only took us a couple months to.
Dana's room.
Dana's room, the last time, sorry about that, Dana, it took a little while to get the heat fixed over there. Uh, also, with respect to the funding, the, the, the Ohio revise code clearly spells out what the funding can be used for, so it's not just a matter of taking the inside milage and staffing up. It, it talks to the allocation towards what can be, uh, used, and what program category. And most of that money, if it's drawn down, and needs to be provided in direct services and, and assistance to veterans. So I will say this, as need arises, and veterans continue to return to Lorraine County, there's gonna be more drawn, that because there's gonna be more need to provide those, those assistance, uh, assistance service, excuse me, services to our returning vets, so we can anticipate that, uh, with regard to benefits. But the, the bulk of the money that's on the inside milage is for, uh, direct assistance, not staffing issues, 'cause I don't want anybody to leave thinking the county is short-staffing, you know, the, the veterans with regard to our current budgetary situations. Also, with the clinic being over, uh, located with the VA hospital, under current regulations with the state of Ohio for the One Stop Service Center, uh, we are required to have the veterans over at the One Stop. That was something that was mandated to us when we had the veterans, uh, over in South Lorraine, uh, many, many years ago, at the Cory building. Uh, I think that they provided fairly good service down there. Uh, we had to move them over to the One Stop, because they're a required mandatory partner on the One Stop. I too believe that when the VA clinic went in a number of years ago, it made a lot of sense, uh, to co-locate in the St. Joe's facility, uh, to provide some seamless, uh, services. As it is right now, we've arranged for veterans to be able to pick up the buses in the lobby over there when they're going places. So we do have cooperative agreements going on that. The, the other issue is that we having a problem with, uh, with the, um, federal side of the veteran services. I'm, I'm always in contact with Sherrod Brown's office, and he is a staunch supporter, uh, of making sure our veterans get services. And if anybody wants to contact my offices, I'll make sure that, when I talk to his staffers out of Cleveland, they understand that we're, we're not getting the services that we believe are, are necessary to support our veterans here in Lorraine County. Uh, I, I know that it's been a big issue for him, and also, we're struggling right now just to keep the VA clinic here in Lorraine County at St. Joe's, we have some issues over that. Uh, so I don't want to lose track of the fact that this board here has been fighting mightily to keep that VA clinic in the face of uncertainty at St. Joe's. And that's been an on-and-off again issue for, for our veterans here, and, and the board has provided tremendous support, support to that. And lastly, I am also a sixteen-year military Navy veteran, so I also have a passion for supporting veterans.
Well, we actually received yesterday, Sherrod Brown, another hundred and seventy-seven thousand towards any build-out or breaking of utilities or something at that South Shore Center. So, hey, Betty Sutton and George Vornovich, I believe, brought that dollar in.
And then I think there's one last, uh, minor issue with signing it into appropriation at the federal level, but we're getting all kinds of support, and that was Sutton's office and Brown's office that, that, that brought that forward. Uh, so, you, you know, efforts are underway, but, but it's, it's just not a local issue and local funding issue. It, and we're, and as somebody said earlier, you know, we're, we're seeing times that we've never saw before, and we're gonna be struggling, and I think the struggles are still gonna, uh, uh, get more difficult before they get better. Thank you.
Just a footnote, Robert Childers, President, Fetch and Service Commission. Uh, I just want to let you know, I have been going in, taking phone calls, to try and help these guys out. Again, as President, you know, I see these things, I've gotta do something to help out. So that's been a volunteering-type situation.
Need more people like you, obviously.
I think Mr. Williams should be back by the end of the month, I think.
Okay.
So that should help significantly.
Thank you. Maybe we can post some of this information on our website?
I, I think that we're working with Don's office already. Uh, more and more officers are coming, since we've improved the website, more and more people coming forward and wanting to use the resources, uh, with the website. Uh, I talk to Don occasionally, I mean, we, we have pretty cooperative relationship out there.
Our information is on the website already.
Is it?
It's the, our core information of what our office functions is, is already there, and most of the plan.
But, uh, I, I think that we may be able to find them some additional space, and maybe set up some kind of, I don't know, some kind of hotline, you know, something where we can get some volunteers in there, and that may give people, you know, a, a warm voice on the end of the phone. We, we've found that when they, when they end up talking to a computer, they get very upset, and uh, if your, your voicemail's like mine, I, it's full all the time, I just can barely get to it, so. As Commissioner Kokoski knows, when she routinely calls me up and says, empty that voicemail. Thank you.
Thank you. We're ready for Mr. Will? Another veteran, Dennis Will. Thank you for coming today.
Good morning.
Good morning, Dennis Will, Lorraine County Prosecutor. I appreciate your time this morning, I know you have a busy agenda. I just wanted to touch base with you, uh, we had previously sent over a request for purchase of vehicles that was going to be, my understanding, utilized out of the funds we recovered on the Justice Center. And we had requested the purchase of four Crown Victorias from the state purchasing, uh, agreement. Uh, I understand there were some concerns by the commissioners about that these were not as efficient mileage-wise as other vehicles that were available. I just wanted to share with you the totality of all the circumstances we considered, in making that suggestion to you. Number one was, we looked at functionality and durability. Uh, many of us have experience in law enforcement, and the Crown Vic has been something that's been utilized by law enforcement agencies for a number of years, so there's a really good history of incident repair, durability, and cost on it. But we did compare that to the Ford Taurus, which is not available on the state bids this year, and the Ford Focus, which is, and also the Chevy Impala, which is more costly than the Crown Vic. And what we found is, is based upon what our needs are, and, and I think that, uh, that you have to understand that, uh, purchase of smaller vehicles that are utilized by some individuals for eight hours a day to perform one specific function, we utilize, utilize these in a number of different functions. Number one, they're utilized by investigators to perform their job, whether it be, uh, following up investigations, locating witnesses, uh, tracking down defendants in conjunction with law enforcement or the marshal service. But in addition to that, we utilize them for transporting witnesses, for transporting prosecutors, whether the prosecutors independently transport themselves to Columbus, uh, to Akron for court appearances, or any number of things in between. Additionally, we utilize them for transport for education, and we've been, tried to be very efficient in the fact that we pack a lot of people in the car when we gotta send them to school somewhere, so we get the efficiency of not having to pay mileage, or not having to use multiple vehicles. So our officers that, that utilize these that are investigators, uh, utilize them not only for their job, but for any number of other functions that we use in the prosecutor's office. We also perform several semi or para-law enforcement services, that we have two officers who are still sworn, they work with the marshal services, with the Anti-Terrorism Task Force, and when they had to round up on, on delinquent parents on child support. And so they were able to cooperatively work with law enforcement agencies, where they would put more than one person in the car, in fact, and sometimes transported prisoners with those. In addition to that, we looked at the, the durability of these. Based upon contacting several law enforcement agencies, and North Ridgeville's kind of like the poster child, that they, they don't buy cars very often out there. They have Crown Vics in the fleet that they're still utilizing, they're thirteen years old that have in excess of a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty thousand miles on. And one of the reasons we're able to keep those in, in, in service is, the platform is bigger, it's been in, in use longer, the maintenance people can service it better, and the incidents of repair, from the information I gave you, compared to the Taurus, is drastically better. Additionally, I talked to some of the departments that utilized, uh, Impalas, that they, everybody was purchasing the Chevy Impalas. One of the things they found out is the, the space in them limits them, their use, so they use them usually for supervisory or some type of limited purpose. But additionally, I talked to Akron and Elyria, and they did not realize the fuel savings that they hoped they would realize by utilizing them, and I, and I'm not sure exactly why that figures out that way. Right now, the Crown Vic is twenty thousand and some odd change, the Impala's twenty-three, I believe. And so overall, everything we looked at, in addition to talking to our maintenance people from the county, they indicated that the Crown Vic was the primary vehicle that they thought would serve us best of all. And especially, you know, they're, they're budgeting right now eight years for a Crown Vic. The other vehicles are budgeted for lower periods of time, for their durability and staying in service. And in fact, they're exceeding that eight years, it's their, their target, by several times, five, six years. We have one that's going on thirteen years old. So what we found is, I took a lot of different factors into account, not just the mileage, 'cause I was concerned with the mileage, I understand your concern with that. But overall, I believe that this is going to be the best package for us, for all the different needs that we have. And it's not just an issue of having a bigger platform or a bigger vehicle. I think overall, that based upon everything we've considered, it's gonna serve our purpose. The last, if we can get these the last thirteen years, you know, that's gonna be very effective for us to maintain, keeping costs down on the maintenance, and then utilizing that we don't have to buy vehicles again for a long period of time. So, I'll address any issues you have, but I just wanted to let you know that I do appreciate your concern for that, and we considered that, and we looked at the smaller packages, and the smaller platforms. And overall, it did not meet the criteria we needed for functionality, and I just think that overall, it's gonna be more effective, cost-effective, uh, saving us money on both the incidence of repair, and how long we can keep the vehicles. So I'll answer any questions that you have.
Commissioners, wasn't, wasn't I that had this concern?
No, I was fine, whatever you like to.
Yeah, I, I, we talked about this a year ago, so.
And I think everybody's looking at.
And the money came out of what was returned to the general fund from the prosecution of one of the people from the Justice Center, so.
Correct. And I appreciate your consideration.
For your vehicles are old enough, you substantiated all that.
Okay, well, I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thanks, Don.
Thanks, Don.
Okay.
Resolutions?
Resolutions.
Number one, job and family services bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Corporations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners' authorized various personnel actions as indicated on summary sheet of employees within jurisdiction, Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordes?
Thank you, Madam President. I do have a matter of personnel hiring at Golden Acres, when don't we. I wish to discuss with the board. I also have an extensive list of labor relations issues with regard to contracts and contract negotiations that I further need to discuss with the board. The personnel issue should be fairly short and specific and to the point. The labor relations issues will take some considerable amount of time. I also am receipt of a fact-finding report that needs to be addressed by the board. We have a time consideration matter with that, and it'll have to be discussed and decided upon today. Also, our labor relations people that work with the Sheriff's Department are here to discuss that with the board, respect to what we need to do with that. So, I would ask that we go into executive session at the conclusion of our regular board meeting today. All those subjects are allowable under the sunshine law. Thank you.
We've read the reading of the Stanford Lorraine County Commissioners' meetings from 2005, 2009.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Authorized County of Lorraine, Ohio to give applicable elected representative approval in connection with the issuance of revenue bonds with Lorraine County Port Authority and authorizing other documents in connection with the issuance of such bonds for Kendall Overland. And we do have Carrie Schwartz here from Benish if any questions. Madam Counselor.
Would you like to explain this, Morris?
Yes, my name is Catherine Schwartz. I'm with Benish Freelander, who is representing Kendall at Oberlin, who is the borrower here. The Lorraine County Port Authority is issuing bonds on behalf of Kendall at Oberlin, which is a continuing care retirement community for capital improvements to the community, including constructing and equipping new community space, renovation of the dining hall, and construction and equipping additional assisted living wing. Now, here Kendall at Oberlin is the borrower and the Port Authority is the issuing authority. These are not general obligation bonds, they're not payable from county funds, there's a loan agreement between the Port Authority and Kendall, and Kendall will be repaying the loan.
Yeah, let me help you out with this real quickly. This is simply the same thing we did with CIC when we did the conduit pass-through bonds. What we've done is we've started issuing the conduit bonds through the Lorraine County Port Authority vice the CIC. So, if you recall, a lot of times the CIC would meet right before the Commissioners' meetings, and then we'd go into the Commissioners' meetings and we would pass the conduit bonds. The Commissioners are all on the CIC, so you were aware of needing to give legislative approval to that. It's the very same process, except that we're using the Port Authority as the host political issuing agency.
And you get the fee?
And we get the fee.
So, you thought we wouldn't know that?
Well, you know, you fund the Port Authority, we're trying to get off the Commissioners' ticket at the Port Authority, too, so.
We created the Port Authority.
Yes, you did, Madam, and you are, as you would say Herb Jacoby's the father of E91, you're the mother of the Port Authority.
As long as it does what it's supposed to do.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Catherine. Thank you. Also moved.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye. Mr. Kayla?
Approved an interim grant assistance contract with ODOT for the state year 2009 Urban Transportation Transit Program. ODOT has approved one hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars to assist in financing the operating assistance period, January through December 2009. Authorized County Administrator to execute on behalf of the Board of Prosecutors, approval is due form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Did you need to?
Do I talk about this wonderful morning?
Uh, well, actually.
Annual appropriation, we get it every year.
Yeah, it's pretty routine. I wish it was something special, but it's fairly routine each year, and I'm just glad that ODOT has continued the program.
I was just wondering, we did get some money for transit for buses. Is there any way that if the Veterans Administration needed money for a bus, that we could use transit money for the veterans' bus?
Well, Commissioner, you really have to stop looking inside my brain. I was sitting here thinking the very same thing, that we may be able to find some synergies between the capital money that we have in transit and being able to provide services to veterans. We have to be really careful. The FTA is fairly finicky with regard to how we spend that money, but Ron and I have been able to, you know, position the funds uniquely to get some of those services. But we also have to watch out for charter rules. But we are required to provide certain amount of services in that area, and I see Ron is itching to say something at the podium.
I am.
Please take over, Mr. Twitey.
When they started talking, I ran over and talked to the budget person for transit. Under fifty-seven, or fifty-three-ten, the Veterans Administration can apply for eighty-twenty money that would require the twenty percent match, and that's the same thing that Lucy Idle, some of the, like Wesley and her, center down here in Elyria, apply for. So, there are federal dollars that they could apply for. We don't make the application. That group makes the application, but typically we support it.
So, they could move forward with that eighteen-person bus with four handicap positions whenever they'd like?
Well, I believe.
What they'd have to do is they'd have to go through the system. We may be able, we have some old capital money, excuse me, because we've had a problem with our twenty percent match. We have some old capital money and we receive some additional capital money. We may be able to ask the FTA.
Right.
To push some of that money in that direction and shorten that process. We'll get with the VA and see if we can't come up with something creative with respect to trying to get some funding. The twenty percent match, though, has been an issue for us over at transit.
Right.
But if they're going to buy a vehicle anyway, it would seem to me to be more cost-effective to use that money as a match for federal dollars than it would for complete purchase of a lesser vehicle. I just, you know, we need to call Chicago and see if we can't allocate a certain amount of our resources, because we did that with the bus up in Avon Lake for a while.
Right.
And we do some of that over in the mountains, so.
But that's a fifty-three-oh-seven.
Right.
And this is not part of, you know, the way it's set up, not part of our government, although they do receive our funds, they're more federal. So, I was told it's fifty-three-ten, and we would help them and assist them and endorse their application. But we'll look at that. When I heard him talk about that, they need to use their money. The lift and everything would be the same. The bigger vehicle, though, he's probably talking about forty-three thousand dollars.
Well, you know, we can probably get a much better vehicle if we just use the twenty percent match.
Right.
Commissioner Kokoski, absolutely. Great, great idea. We'll work with them. The other thing is some of these, if they can elevate their expectation of the vehicle, I agree with Prosecutor Wells was here, some of the heavier-duty vehicles give us a longer service life, and it's well worth investing in the beginning, and it is, you know, having less of a service life and also more repairs. So, we'll make that contact pretty quick.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Engineer wore a contract to J.L. Reicker, Inc., clearing the amount of one hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and seventy-five cents for the Durkey Road Bridge replacement. Seven bids were received on February sixth, this being the most responsive applying with specifications. Issue notice to proceed honor before April first and complete honor before August twenty-first. Authorized County Administrator notify the auditor to release retainage at completion of said project. Engineers estimate was one hundred and seventeen thousand and is contingent upon state approvals through OPWC and to be paid from the engineers' project account.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Receive and file the maps, profiles, schedules and reports prepared by the county engineer relating to the Rock Ditch, lateral one, Columbia Township.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Cordes, County Administrator?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. It's already been a long morning and we have an extensive agenda. I do, I did want to brief a little bit on the Washington trip, but Commissioner Kayla was also there, so I'll take his lead, maybe we can have a discussion through his report. So, I will yield the mic to our prosecutor. Thank you.
I have no need of anything in executive session this morning, Commissioners, so I have no report.
Great.
Wow.
Thank you. For those of you who have been missing our meetings on Saturdays and Monday nights because of the fire at the college, Hal told us that it should be back on this Saturday, so it'd be good for all the people that get the information about the veteran services. Also, I just got an email about the state of Ohio recovery for the stimulus package for individuals. There's a lot of things that you might want to consider looking up. It's how will food assistance be affected, social security and supplemental security income be affected, unemployment compensation, COBRA, medical benefits, tax benefits, and if you lose your job. So, it's state of Ohio, no, it's actually ohio.gov/recovery/individuals. So, there's a lot of good information, not just for counties and states, but for individuals. So, you might want to take a look at that. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, it was actually a very good week, able to attend the Workforce Development Conference in Washington, DC. Actually drove up instead of flying, because after looking at the agenda beforehand, I attended everything I had to do with the green jobs, the green market, I want to see what Pennsylvania had done, because their workforce development person and one of their Secretaries of Labor and Energy in Pennsylvania was one of the main speakers, so I drove up there. They're very beautiful, they've done a great job. They talked about how they were able to cluster their organizations together, draw manufacturers, and did a very good job actually on the backside of it. They stole a lot of the people from Ohio who had options on property and were going to establish here, because our energy bill ended up two years behind theirs. They did put together a Department of Alternative Energy and their governor funded it with eight hundred and fifty million dollars to get them started. I've been working on the policy part of that at the state level for a couple of years now. But there is a big issue. All the questions through every one of the forums we attended came back to public policy not being in concert in regions. Pennsylvania did seven regions around their state, each focusing on different forms of alternative energy, from geothermal to wind to solar to weatherization and getting people back to work, and they've been a very stalwart job of working the dollars and how to do it. So, I think we really need to start working, because I've spoken to some of the elected officials around the county that we really need, through the Lorraine Growth Partnership approaches, get together and get our policies all together, so when we take a package out to attract someone, we know what can be done in each area. So, I'll play the opportunity, President Bill Clinton spoke, eight o'clock Monday morning, opening of Monday's Day of the Conference, did a great job, spoke for over an hour. He gets it. He also spoke two weeks ago on a webinar I was on about alternative energy and the workforce development needs of our country. And we also met Secretary of Labor Solis, the new appointee from President Obama. Also down there, found out, one of the attendees that were with us, met the Workforce Investment Board Director for Denver, Colorado. She's from Sheffield Lake. Paula Gonzalez Farrell, yes, graduated from Cleveland State. And then we went, well, Monday, we also did a Capitol Hill visit, got to actually eat in the House Member's Dining Room, which is kind of nice, Capitol Hill White Bean Soup gyms that I talk about. We had a meeting there with some folks, but then on Tuesday, we spent a day at the Capitol begging for money. Congresswoman Sutton and Congresswoman Capter, both were there to see us. In the Senate, they had twenty-four votes scheduled that day. So, we weren't able to meet with actually our US Senators, but we did meet with their staff and talked about our priority projects, not only in regards to the stimulus bill, but in appropriations coming up. And as you see things coming out, there's more dollars coming. I just had a sheet that I received that said what Sherrod Brown and Betty Sutton did, if I can find which paper that is. There's just so much paper coming out, as Commissioner Kokoski said, notified. But one of the issues was money for our St. Joe's Center that our dear illustrious administrator serves as the chairperson of.
And is it just brick and mortar or anything for operations?
No, no, operations money. We asked about, it's hard to get operations money. We brought that up with each and every representative or their staff people. It's all about operations money. They're working hard at it, they will keep us informed up to date, and we just keep applying for money as they send us notices out. Go ahead, Jim.
A couple of things. We did have the very, very, in my mind, large honor of dining right underneath the picture of George Washington, accepting the surrender from the British. It's an original painting that was done a few hundred years ago, but we weren't there just for lunch, we were actually there working on Project Freeze, which is one of our real team projects that we've been working with a company on. Their folks happened to be in the Washington area at the same time our folks, so there were several of us that dined together and worked on discussions on how to get funding into Project Freeze. We were surprised to get the call while we were in Washington, it wasn't a planned issue. So, we were able to take an opportunity between the big break for lunch at our seminar with DOL to take a walk over there and work with them. So, we had some productive work there. Also, the one thing that kept resounding when we were on the Hill and also talking to our experts that positioned us on the Hill was the value of the Lorraine County Growth Partnership. The comments that we heard, and maybe Commissioner Kayla would like to expand that, but, you know, we took a package, not only of our capital appropriation request, also a summary of our stimulus package request with us to organize them by priority to present to legislature. We also took an extensive package on the Lorraine County Growth Partnership that was actually prepared by the college, was a nice piece of collateral material detailing all the things that the partnership was doing and all the collaborations that have been made in programming through DOL funding and local initiatives. And I would say they were usually impressed that we are paralleling our workforce investment issues very closely with our economic development objectives, and they said we probably have some of the most forward-thinking they've seen in a long time, and you may want to take it.
Oh, yeah, that was probably one of the main topics, is they looked at the project and what we gave them, what we've been working on here for four years. They were amazed at, and as Jim was talking and other people in the room were recognizing what the Growth Partnership has done with the statewide awards and national recognition on this, and actually the mirroring of some of our projects, the Project Ten being mirrored statewide and being offered nationally, our business connects. So, it's nice that we're on the radar. Marcy Capter was wonderful. We're supposed to be there 15 twenty minutes. We spent an hour and forty-five with Congresswoman Capter, talking about projects. The project she asked us, we go in as local government. We're asking for money. She's telling us what she wants us to do. So she was very good. And again, they all hit on the monies in the green, talk about the greens sorted out. They're supposed to be, Department of Labor's coming out with three different versions of where they think the green industries are going to. Also, I'm sorry, I didn't want to, before I forgot, because Marcy Capter had reminded us, Monday afternoon at Bowling Green State University, she'd like to see commissioners from 1:00 to 2:30 for her to talk about where we need to get through, through the stimulus package and appropriations, what we need in this area. And she was very vocal in what she saw things going. She was very positive with commuter rail, so that would make Commissioner Blair happy. And on the green movement, when it came to food and using our rural and agricultural expertise in Lorraine County, we've got a packet, I think Jim has. I left mine.
Can't trust you.
But, yeah, go ahead, Jim, not to stop you. I want to get that in.
In order that, you know, Commissioner Kayla and I decided to just kind of bounce off each other with the report earlier before we came. There's going to be about $800 million in the Job Creation Act with green jobs.
Correct.
Right now, I've talked to all three of the commissioners, and I'm working on the objectives of trying to get somebody to coordinate our access to dollars, make sure that we're well-positioned. And we need to make sure that we have a dedicated resource to getting line for most of these dollars. But the emphasis made was that if you're not preparing to access these funds already, you're already too late.
Right. Get out of the way. Other people are at the trough.
So the part of it, I was really surprised the amount of dollars that are going to be put there. And I also expect the REA Authorization Act to run into some considerable obstructions with the way they're doing business. It looks like there's going to be a revamp of a lot of those issues. And quite frankly, Senator Voinovich's office is going to be a proponent of some of those changes. So we have to be lightning quick in our ability to respond when changes come so that we can get access to dollars because the need is so great that the dollars sound so massive, but they're really not. And those that are prepared to go will be those that are prepared to be funded. The rest of the people will be standing around wondering why they didn't get into action. And so we're trying to stay on top of this. I have never seen a more robust legislative period in all my years in government.
Can we say chaotic, too?
Well, I was trying to be kind.
We left Capitol Hill, 6:15, 6:20, and it was probably a line out of one exit that still had 250, 300 people waiting in line to get in to see our representatives. It was unbelievable. We were meeting in hallways. There were so many people there, she couldn't fit in offices. I mean, it is really moving and moving quick because the numbers you're talking about, I wrote them all down, the ERA package.
Right.
And alternative energy, two different versions, $6.3 billion. $500 million just in retraining for job trainings in the green industry to start at. Nine and three-quarter billion dollars to do greener schools, geothermal, upgrade solar. $3.6 billion just towards federal buildings. $5 billion for weatherization of low-income housing. $100 million just for new grid training to look how to make the smarter grid so we don't have another blackout, basically. And then out of the $15 billion for transit, a large portion of that going to greening of vehicles, the natural gas and such. I mean, there is a pot of money out there that we spent.
And that's one of the reasons why we need to apply the correct resources because we're struggling. And I wasn't just talking about on the Hill. Every day, something changes that's coming down to us. I've never seen so much paperwork and so much submissions and grants and resubmissions and new criteria. Just when we get a package done, something else changes. And we're really struggling to stay ahead of this. This is an amazing time, but it's also one where you can slip behind very easily. So I guess I could sum it up from my perspective. It was a great time to be on the Hill. I've been there before when Congress was in session, but I've never seen it this busy before on the Hill, ever. It was just staggering the amount of people that are up there trying to get ahead of the line. And they're not without the ability to elbow you in the ribs to get in front of you. And I mean that legislatively and with their paperwork. So, you know, we're going to have to stick out our elbows and make sure that nobody gets past and we get our resources. Thanks, Commissioner Kayla.
Well, also on that, when I was talking about the St. Joe's, 166 grand, that was Senator Brown and Congresswoman Sutton. But then we also picked up from Senator Brown, Congresswoman Sutton, and Senator Voinovich, almost half a million bucks for the wind turbine, electric, high-speed shaft brake project at Parker Hannafin. So the money's rolling in. It's just a matter of getting in line to get it. So I mean, it was an exciting week, busy week. Glad to be home. But those turbines look beautiful driving through Pennsylvania. Maybe someday here.
Let's hope so.
Happy 16th birthday to Julia Blair today, our youngest grandchild. And for those who know that Chuck Blair's been in the hospital this past week, he is doing much better. And he's the resident at Community Health Partners this week. We're lucky to have a fine hospital like that in Lorraine County, as the other two are as well. Tomorrow, Noaka Meeting, and the Executive Committee is going to review the minutes of the June 6th meeting where we talked about the weighted voting. Also, there's a request before the Executive Committee for money from this board for commuter rail and from the Lake County Board of Commissioners for their Lake County Lost Nation Airport project. So we'll have an interesting day tomorrow, too. That's it.
Uh, we're correspondents.
Move the reading be waved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kokowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Aye.
Public comment?
Anybody from the public wishing to make a comment?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Seeing none, Dominic?
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Late morning yet, Dominic. Almost afternoon.
The time change, I haven't even gotten acclimated to it yet. My name is Dominic Manachi. I'm with the Lorraine County Sheriff's Employees Association. I'm on the Board of Directors. We're an affiliate of the Ohio Patrolman's Benevolent Association, LCSA, and we represent corrections officers at the jail. It was a real pleasure to get to meet Don Bates from the Lorraine County Veterans Office and Robert Childers. I never had the opportunity to meet them. But I know my family is involved with the IAV Post One, and they do a lot of work for Lorraine County veterans. I had no idea that we had 26,838 veterans here in Lorraine County. My concerns that are being addressed by our bargaining members was in January, the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners imposed a one-half a percent sales tax earmarked for safety services. And that was a half a percent, which would generate approximately $14 to $15 million per year. Our membership has met and our Board of Directors have met, and we're confused on some of the issues of why. And we were supportive of that in our newsletters. I believe you guys received copies of my newsletters. And we were supportive of the Board of Commissioners. We do realize that sometimes you have to do what's unpopular for the benefit of the people. However, where our confusion comes in is to impose a sales tax as an emergency measure. We don't understand why there has been inaction at this point to restore the budget to the sheriff's office and the Lorraine County Prosecutor's Office, as well as the courts. Would it have not been more advantageous not to impose the tax, perhaps, and just put it on the ballot in November because the voters are going to have the opportunity to make it a permanent tax? Is that correct?
Correct.
The measure to make it an emergency tax, we're confused as why there has been inaction as to bring the safety services back. And maybe Mr. Cordez or Commissioner Blair or Kayla or Kokowski, you could shed a little light on that for us.
There's a couple of things, and I'll let my other commissioners bring up the other issues. But we did have the bad news that the jail was going to have a revenue shortage of about $1 million. We just had another certificate reduction of $1.2 million in fees. And so we're kind of waiting until at least the first quarter to get an idea where we stand as far as revenue and our expenses. So, I mean, it's like bad news after bad news.
Oh, correct me if I'm wrong.
I don't want to, you know, go ahead and reinstitute anything at this point until we know that we can open the doors in 2010.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's earmarked for safety services, correct? And you can collect that tax regardless of the outcome in November, pass or fail, for one year, correct? Starting April?
Starting April 1st.
Okay, so pass or fail in November, we have $14 million coming in earmarked for safety services. Is that how it works?
It's not safety services. It's earmarked for.
For the criminal justice system.
Criminal justice system.
Right, which is from the judges all the way down through.
Clerk of courts, judges.
That's everyone. It's not just for the safety service. It's criminal justice system, which eats up 72% of our budget.
I understand that.
And, there you go. How's this, Jim?
Sorry, Commissioner.
Thank you. And what we are doing under emergency, we are going to keep the doors open with the current cuts we've had and hope we have no more. But we have to open the doors in 2010. If we start implementing that money towards the shortages this year, next year will be more severe. Right now, if it does not pass, we will look at an additional 15% in cuts next year on top of what we did this year. And the following year would be even more severe because we are prohibited by law from putting another tax on. They take us off for a whole year. So it'll be nothing collected in 2010. So the hope being is this year, it's really going to hurt. And hopefully, if we're all on board together and we show the public where the dollars are going to, they will approve it in November so we can get the staffing back where it was in 2007 and '08. If not, we're looking at currently 15% more in cuts, if not more, after what Commissioner Kokowski said, having a million-two taken out of our certificate with no increase coming in the next year or two, currently to make up those differences, Dominic.
Yeah, but the costs continue to escalate with the cost of the jail. And the county jail has been inadequate for quite a few years now. We've been dealing with overcrowded conditions there for far too long. And I think that needs to be addressed because we have a very dangerous situation there. I worked there on a day-in, day-out basis. I have 16 years' experience here. This is my second term as a director for the LCSEA. I worked 10 years as a sergeant, and the conditions are deplorable for officer safety there. And some of our male housing units do have one correctional officer to 100 inmates. Not to mention, we do not represent the deputies in our bargaining unit, but I've addressed this board before. By losing 12 full-time and eight part-time deputies, those deputy sheriffs are our first responders should we have a riot, escape, or a life-threatening emergency in that jail. Life care or metro lifelike cannot expedite and leave our grounds without a deputy sheriff escort. When you have two and three deputy cars on the road to patrol the townships, the chances of us having a car available for emergency medical condition or a riot within the jail is not very conceivable. We rely on those deputies as our first responders. And you've got to keep in mind, Commissioners, that the Lorraine County Correctional Facility is not the only correctional facility over there. We have the Lorraine County Detention Home across the street, which is also overcrowded. We have the community-based medina, Lorraine County-based correctional facility behind us. So all of these correctional facilities that house, and ours house, very violent felony criminals that are looking at life sentences or lethal injection without parole. Our numbers in murder in Lorraine County have increased over the last two and three years. We house those prisoners at our jail until they are adjudicated. Majority of the time, they waive their rights to a fair and speedy trial. These people have nothing to lose to liberate themselves in an attempt to escape or take a hostage in that building. And we rely on those deputies as our first responders. For us to sit by and wait and to see what happens in November, and I am supportive of the imposed tax, but what I don't support is and understand is the inaction of why nothing has transpired to restore these budgets until we wait till this passes. To me, it would have been more advantageous to just place it on the ballot in November and let the voters decide as opposed to impose it as an emergency measure because you're sending some confusion to not only myself, but I think a lot of taxpayers of why the emergency was necessary. And we're going to wait until November to see what happens.
Emergency is giving us the ability to open in 2010 and 2011 without an additional $8 to $9 million in cuts, Dominic.
Okay.
$8 to $9 million in cuts. Do you have any clue what that would do to the county?
That would not.
We would be looking at having a jail of 50 people, probably, and letting all the rest go. That's what we have, this board has worked adamantly not to go to early release. We'll not let those guys back out there. We're having a cash crunch like every other organization in this country and worldwide. We're preparing ourselves because we are the budgetary authority for the county to be able to open in 2010 with some semblance of a county government that can provide the service it needs, like deputies, like keeping the jail operating, like the prosecutors and the courts. If we are to move forward and have to deal with the issue just today and the citizens of this county decide they're not paying anymore, we are looking at, I don't know, Drawes is probably here, he can tell you. Drawes, if you took another 20% of your budget, what would that do to the jail and the sheriff's office? Captain Resendez? Okay, Dominic, that's why it was prepared that way. Because I don't think there's a confusion out there. We've talked about the need to open in 2010 and 2011.
Commissioner, can I expand upon one of your points, please? Dominic, I think we've said this out here many, many times, and maybe we're not communicating the message adequately. So let me try again. Even with the cuts the county experienced to date, we are still going to be deficit spending $7 million this year. That's out of the carryover. We don't have any carryover for next year. So unless that money that is being collected beginning April 1st, which we should start seeing come in sometime late June, unless that money is put into a separate fund, which I have the legislation in my package to be doing before the month is out, if we spend it this year, where are we going to get that $7 million for next year and for 2010? Because we're not able to declare an emergency within a year of declaring the last one. If we don't have forward-thinking for the next two or three years, we're looking at a further disaster here in Lorraine County. Five years, we've been talking about this. In five years, everybody just thought it wasn't going to happen. It's happened, and it was happening for the last three years. Nobody wanted to face the reality that, you know, the loaves of bread weren't going to continue giving. If we don't bank this money, it'll decimate this county in 2010. And I don't even want to begin to think about opening the doors in 2011. Everybody go out there and think that this is all saber rattling, tree shaking, fear PR. It is not. And we have been talking about this for too many years. So anything that needs explanation will be given an explanation. The board just got downgraded, $1.2 million, as Commissioner Kokowski said. Sales tax revenues are down $412,000 this month from last year. Those are factors I have not even considered in my recommendation to this board yet. You know, we're not scraping the bottom of the barrel. We're turning it over and pulling it out from underneath it if we can. And there's a lot of misunderstanding by a lot of parties about where general fund money is and what it's used for and how it could be allocated. So they go out, they think they understand it, and then they talk to 10 people, they talk to 100 people, they talk to 1,000 people. And when they come back and they say, "We still got money." Yeah, we still got money, but it can only be used for certain things and certain areas. And we still need money in, money out to keep this county working. We cannot operate this county on a zero-dollar, dollar in, dollar out. We cannot go from payday to payday. We need millions of dollars to operate this county effectively on an in-and-out basis. Otherwise, we're going to produce absolutely nothing, and then it's going to grind down. It's like the spiraling. As the further you get down, the faster the spin happens until you get completely flushed. And I'll tell you, just like the stimulus dollars and grant dollars that we apply for, a lot of times, we've got to have money to be in those grants. We have to pay out on those grants and then seek reimbursement to provide those services. If we don't have dollars to pay out and we don't have a certificate of availability of funds, we don't get the grants. They end. And a lot of those grants are supporting a lot of the criminal justice system in this county. We will not be able to support those things if we don't maintain some cash balances. And that's what people don't understand. They come in, they say, "Well, you got $2 million here, you got $1 million." Yes, we do. It's money in and out to do our business. It's to be able to buy a product, install it, and then get paid to put it into a maybe a better, you know, understanding. And people don't think that government operate like that. And we do operate like that. So, you know, I appreciate the dialogue, but the board never intended and never stated, nor have I ever heard once from them in my individual discussions with them, that they were indicating to the public that this money was going to be used for current-year fiscal issues. Unless I'm misstating that on behalf of the board, I apologize if I am. But I don't believe that that's ever been stated. In fact, I think that you've asked this two or three times, and I know you a long time, so I'm not trying to be contrary to you, Dominic.
Understood.
You and I go back, way back into the nineties.
Way back into the nineties.
But I think that they've been steadfast in their discussion points on that issue.
Let me make an inference to the quarter percent jail tax. Is that still a potential tax?
It's a ongoing tax that would require a resolution of the Board of Commissioners to repeal.
And what has the, I know, of course, the sales tax has been down because people aren't spending money. They're hanging on to the money they got. But how much is the jail tax bringing annually currently?
Jail tax brought in about, I want to say about $7.6 million last year, thereabouts. You know, within a couple of percentage points. I don't have my paperwork.
And that money is utilized for additional building? Or is that money utilized for payroll?
You know, in the beginning, the allocations, when we first started having the money, we set aside quite a bit of money on that for construction projects. Obviously, we were gearing up to provide a large facility at a time. You were all part of it.
I was on the committee, Jim.
Right. So we had a substantial amount of that money set aside for construction and renovation of the jail for the expansion. As the construction renovation started to get down because it was being completed, more and more and more of that money went over to operating capital because we started hiring the people and housing more prisoners. Until sometime around, I want to say 2001, the allocation went pretty much to 100% operations to provide continuing support for the jail. It was about that same timeframe that we went back to a sizable commitment from the other half a percent that the county uses for operating funds to be able to support the revenue necessary for expenditures above and over what that quarter percent put in. I may be off a little bit on the dates. I see Drawes back, you were back then at those periods of times. Does that sound about roughly? All right, thanks, Drawes. So, and right now, we're anticipating, I think, about $4.4 million? We haven't allocated that much money.
$4.6 million.
$4.6. I know we're weak. I think we only got about $3.3, $3.4. I'm not current on my sheets. I'm getting ready to work on the annual appropriation, which we haven't passed to talk with the board later in this month on. But we're short. And so we have to figure that out, too. We just didn't have the money under the certificate to be able to put additional funding there. What I had hoped for is that the revenue projections would be slightly higher than the certificate indicated. You know, normally, I'm pretty close at calling this, but I got to tell you, you know, this $1.0 billion was a bit of a setback for my thinking that I just received. And, you know, I hope it's a blip, but if it's not, if we see it. And, you know, I hope it's a blip, but if it's not, if we see a continuing trend on this over the next month or two, there's going to have to be a recalculation of the entire commitment to funding by the general fund and by this board with regard to how we're going to do that. And, and we're running out of options pretty quick, and people want us to run out of the little bit of cash we got even quicker.
And Dominic, just in retrospect, we have a quarter percent dedicated to just the jail and a half a percent to the general fund, twenty-two million dollars roughly. The jail itself is eating up over twelve million dollars a year.
I understand.
Of all of our sales tax collection. So, I mean, it's more than fifty percent of what we collect total for county operations. So it's a, it's a big gorilla that we know we have to fund.
But I just want to keep you aware and apprised of the fact that the condition isn't getting any better there as far as safety. We have safety issues and concerns. The union has grievances for safety issues, health and safety measures that are in place. And I'm concerned about not only the, the lives of our officers, but the residents that we house there as well, because the sheriff is charged by state law for the safekeeping of these individuals. If you believe in the Constitution, and we all do, you're innocent until proven guilty. And a lot of our people are not adjudicated yet. They're waiting adjudication. So the conditions there aren't getting any better, the overcrowding issues we deal with on a daily basis. And we're concerned for officer and public safety that those deputy sheriffs that we rely on as our first responders are no longer going to be there and available, and it could create a very big liability on a county down the road. So that's why, why I wanted to address it. We deal with this day in and day out. And I'm going to tell you what, there is nothing pretty about a job of a corrections officer.
No.
These men and women work hard every day, and our deputy sheriffs and our COs are not second-class citizens, they're first-class citizens. I work with these people daily. They're committed, hard-working individuals.
Dominic, if you don't remember, in the nineties, they used to make me negotiate your contract in the back in the jail.
In the old roll call room.
They used to stand the, the restraints out there and the lechta mask out there if I wasn't being cooperative. So...
We have better ones now.
I also remember my meatcake lunch, sitting in the back of the kitchen, so I got a flavor for what the inmates were eating. So, you know, I think, I think that, you know, we have a lot of respect for what goes on at the jail. We're, we're aware of the audacious nature. And I think Commissioner Blair and I were both here in the nineties when we had a maximum, it wasn't a maximum-cure facility, it should have been, because all we had there was the most hardened of hardened criminals waiting to go. Instead of being, you know, a DUI misdemeanor facility, we had become, you know, nothing but murderers and rapists and the worst kinds of deviants that needed to be behind bars, and it became very, very dangerous there. So I, I think we're aware of that.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dominic.
Commissioners, if I might just segue on to that a little bit. The Budget Commission met on Monday, and the sales tax revenue, although there's, there's reasons it's a little bit skewed for the months, but for the first two months, our sales tax revenue is down fifteen percent. So that's, that's probably a little bit skewed, but there's no doubt that that number is going down.
You know, I, I hope it is, because while sales tax revenues have not risen with any appreciable gusto at all, we have not really seen an overall significant downtick. It's been, it's been flat. It's stayed pretty well at the median line. If we start seeing a downtick, that's going to indicate another serious consideration. We've been able to weather through that, but we may have finally hit the wall with regard to that revenue generation in that particular area. Because we've been monitoring, we had thought that a year or two ago that we would see some dipping in that, and it didn't occur, it just has not grown. We may have hit the exponential wall with regard to what we're going to see from here on.
But there was a possible fifteen percent downgrade, that would equate to three point three million dollars across the full three-quarter percent that's already there.
Well, you know, it, it, there, there's a lot of issues there, Commissioner. I'm, I'm thinking fifteen percent sounds pretty severe. I have been in touch with, count my peers in other counties, and I have a package I want to share with the board probably later this week, early next week, about what they're doing. Just for all of our residents in Lorain County that, that don't really, don't get outside the county much and talk to government outside the county, without exception, most of the counties are experiencing difficulties that are close to what we are. Us is a little bit more significant, because we lost all that local government money a couple of years ago, and we had a need for increased service. And our tax base, I will tell you, is lower than all the tax bases of all my peers that I talked to. We get the giggle factor when we tell them how much revenue we're trying to operate on in such a large county. But they also are experiencing massive cuts across the board and struggling with the same issues. So it's not just Lorain County government, and it's not the inaction of Lorain County or the inefficiency of Lorain County government.